Good morning and welcome to the Pitt County Commissioners Meeting. Those of you who are at home watching us on television and those of you who are here with us today. We'll have our roll call if you'll please punch in. And we will have our pledge this morning by Commissioner Nunley and our invocation by Commissioner McGloughorn. If you'll please stand.
Thank you to God for our life, health, and strength. Bless that you bless this meeting. Have it to be as you see fit. Let us make the decision that will be pleasing to thee. Peace bless and we ask, in thy holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
Does it move?
And I just need Mr. Albright to finish roll call and then you'll be ready to vote for your next.
Now.
But we're doing it again.
This is the approval of the agenda. First thing we have on our agenda is a presentation of the Hurricane Matthew response and recovery. Ms. Rhodes.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm pleased to introduce to you this morning Dr. Suzanne Lee with the Department of Public Health with East Carolina University. She's a faculty member there. And Dr. Lee has worked in our community for quite a while after a couple of the flood episodes that we've been through. And she's here this morning to share some of the information that she's collected, not only on the response, but the recovery efforts associated with especially Hurricane Matthew. So with that, I'd like to introduce to you Dr. Lee.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board of Commissioners. As Mr. Rhodes said, my name is Suzanne Lee and I'm a professor in the Department of Public Health at East Carolina University. Thank you for allowing me to speak this morning. I'm speaking on behalf of participants who shared their stories about recovery from Hurricane Matthew. I'd like to acknowledge Disaster Recovery Partners for Pitt County for their supportive In the aftermath of Hurricane Matthew, our team sought to understand how people recover from natural disasters. We sought feedback from survivors on how to improve the governmental response, and this presentation provides information on what we found. We conducted nine listening sessions. One of them was in Robinson County with 53 residents and identified several opportunities. The findings represent the perceptions and understanding of residents after Hurricane Matthew in 2016. The first finding was that many residents now have two mortgages. Residents are paying off their first mortgages on houses destroyed in the storm and take on a new mortgage to rebuild. Some type of loan forgiveness would benefit homeowners in this situation. Some owner-occupied homes are uninhabitable on property owner's land. Government could allow for funds to tear down houses that are deemed uninhabitable. Many residents seek funds to replace HVAC systems for both insured and uninsured residents. The insured respondents stated that high deductibles prevented replacement of HVAC units. Next, mold growth is problematic. Mold testing kits and cost of testing could be made available through the Health Department. Finally, access to mental health services was lacking after Hurricane Matthew. Communication was the second key finding. During the response phase, respondents suggested more timely information on when to evacuate to a shelter. For example, how far in advance can someone be informed that a shelter will be opened? Residents do not know where to evacuate. Many elderly residents in northern Pitt County live alone and are not mobile. Some residents suggested a shelter for the elderly be available at the Bethel Senior Center. Many residents do not evacuate due to the potential for looting. In the recovery phase, several suggestions emerged. The process for applying for governmental assistance is confusing. The federal, state, county, and local relationships and jurisdictions for recovery are not well understood to the residents. Comments such as, "Why do I need a small business loan when I don't own a small business?" is an example. Many renters who are poor do not qualify for a low-interest loan. Other solutions for renters could be considered. Inconsistent case management means that residents retell their situations multiple times. Residents recommended consistency with case management. Delays in approval of buyout or other aid means that families have uncertainty in their long-term living situation, which may be in a hotel, renting at a temporary location, or living with relatives. Residents recommended improved communication, explaining why delays will or may occur. Next, when a FEMA... excuse me. When a FEMA rejection letter is received, residents do not understand the appeal process. Residents recommended improving communication of the appeal process. When the water level begins to rise, it's unclear when a road should be passed. Placing signage that indicates a water level when a road or bridge should not be passed was recommended. Spanish-speaking residents commented that emergency management staff and sheriffs do not speak Spanish or have interpreters available. There were some other notable comments that were consistently mentioned throughout. The first, ditches along rural roads are overgrown with trees and weeds. Overgrown ditches cannot fulfill the purpose to carry water away. There's a strong perception that dams along the Noose and Tar Rivers release water that originate in the Raleigh area, adding to flooding in eastern North Carolina. Snakes are a hazard after floodwaters retreat. Snakes crawl in standing water and get up into the skirt lining of mobile units. Parents don't want their children outside due to the potential for snake bites. Residents don't trust the tap water from Greenville Utilities due to the smell and taste. People on average are spending $20 per week on bottled water. The state of North Carolina and Pitt County government work tirelessly during and after hurricane and flooding events to protect the health, safety, and long-term recovery of our citizens. We appreciate and are grateful for the sacrifice that public service employees make to fulfill their duties during disaster response. These comments represent the themes that emerged from residents as they recalled their experiences after Hurricane Matthew. Since 2016, some of the processes that FEMA and the state of North Carolina implement in disaster response may have been modified. East Carolina University and Disaster Recovery Partners for Pitt County continue to collaborate to identify solutions to some of the issues raised. Thank you, and I'll take questions. I'd like to, first of all, excuse me, before I conclude, give some acknowledgements to Disaster Recovery Partners for Pitt County, Interfaith Clergy, North Pitt Improvement Association, Ripton Mission Ministries, AMEX Can, our colleagues at UNC Pembroke, and others at ECU, and the C Grant Program at NC State. Thank you.
Anyone have a question or a comment? Okay. I'd like to just ask if you are... one thought that just came to my mind, and then we have another hurricane and it's still there. It's when you, for instance, if your house is inhabitable, but you can, you know, go and buy another house or relocate or whatever, but you still have your payment on the first house. Is there any work being done with... because you can't borrow money if you've got a loan that you have reneged on. So those kinds of things to me, like you say in here, are things that we need to be looking at now.
Yes, and...
And we can't bite the whole thing off at one time, but identify some of those things that might make a real, real difference.
I appreciate your comment, Madam Chairman, and these are issues that legal aid and the state of North Carolina and other entities could help to work through. And to my knowledge, some of those issues are still being worked through and not fully resolved.
Okay. Thank you so much for your presentation.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. Next, Sam Kruen.
And as Sam comes to the podium, the title on this says 2020 Property Reappraisal. It's actually property revaluation, reappraisal and revaluation, two different processes. And Sam's going to explain what revaluation is and how Pitt County does it, when Pitt County does it, and what it means to the taxpayers in Pitt County and the board.
Morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. It's good to be with you all this morning. I'm Sam Kruen. I'm the Pitt County Tax Administrator, and I'm here this morning to go over or put a spotlight on the 2020 reappraisal. First of all, I just want everybody to know that we are located at 110 Evans Street, Aaron Greenble. The 2020 reappraisal... A lot of people want to ask, what is a reappraisal? And what it is, Pitt County is updating all of our real property values to 100% of the market value as of the effective date of January 1st of 2020. Our last county-wide reappraisal was... took effect January 1st, 2016. So over that four-year period, the market is changing. And one thing I want to emphasize throughout this presentation is the tax office... the tax office is concentrating on market value. This is basically our appraisal of all the property located in Pitt County as far as a mass appraisal. Why have a reappraisal? Well, first off, it's mandated under general statute 105286, and that's to do a reappraisal at least every six years, excuse me, every eight years. Pitt County does it every four years. What it does is it ensures that all property reflects current market value. It also creates equity amongst many different types of property, and that could be between real property, personal property, and public service property. And of course, anytime you're doing a reappraisal on real property, you have a market that's always transitioning. So as you can see in this photo, this is a new subdivision that's going up in the county. It's just starting. A little over a year ago, this property was being farmed, and that's the transition that we're seeing from a rural community to an urban community. And the results of this is new markets. And as you can see in this... in this picture, this house is probably roughly 50% complete, and it's already sold. Market value. What is market value? It's the most probable or most likely price that a property would sell for. It requires a willing buyer and a willing seller, neither under the pressure to buy or sell. It implies that the buyer or seller are fully informed of the property, of the purpose of the property, and what's been... and the capability what's been able to be used for. It also recognizes the property's current use as well as its potential use. Our markets are changing, and as you can tell by this photo, this is Reed Circle and Dixon Avenue. And you can see here there's a public parking lot. And you also can see at the corner of Dixon and Reed Circle that there's an empty lot there on the corner. And this is a new private student housing development that's gone up on that corner. And also, there's plans for a new luxury townhome community to go on that corner as So when we look at these transitional market and these new markets, how is it that market value of real property is determined? Citizens who buy and sell real estate in the open market establish... they establish what market value is. The tax office does not determine the market value. Actually, our citizens do. Our job in the tax office and as far as the appraisers is to diligently and carefully research and analyze the sales in the local market to determine an estimate of market value for all properties as we are required to do by law. And now to briefly show you our appraisal staff, we roughly have 155 years of combined And it will be the reappraisal staff that will be conducting the next county-wide reappraisal. Some counties will hire reappraisal firms to come in and do it. We have the capability here to do it, and that does allow for savings for us to do this ourselves. Like I said, we've got 155 years of combined appraisal experience. Each staff member is certified with the North Carolina Department of Revenue to appraise As a tax administrator, I will be involved in the county-wide reappraisal. Chip Main, he is our reappraisal coordinator. Chip has about 40 years' worth of experience in conducting mass appraisals. We also have Russell Hill. He's our real property manager with 11 years' worth of experience. Rod Tugwell, he has got 26 years of appraisal experience. William, or as other people know him, B.J. Pittman, has 25 years. Jimmy Sugg, 20 years. Buddy Blake, 12 years. Robert Turcot, he's got four years. Charles Noble, two years. And David Guderman, he has one year. And so what we're doing as an appraisal staff, right now, we are currently looking at all these sales. And we have developed a preliminary schedule of values. And what we're doing is we're going through and we're testing the schedule of values and see if we're meeting what market value is today. One thing to note about the reappraisal, excuse me, property will not change uniformly throughout the county. Market value depends on market conditions and recent sales in neighborhoods. Some neighborhoods and some homes will go up, some will decrease, and some will remain the same. As part of the reappraisal process, we have divided the county into approximately 396 or, excuse me, 395 appraisal neighborhoods. Will all the property be reappraised? Yes, all the real property will be reappraised. And this would be residential, this would be open land, this would be commercial, also be industrial, properties and all the structures that are located within Pitt County. The reappraisal does not include personal property on items such as motor vehicles and boats. These values are adjusted and appraised annual... Just to demonstrate the type of properties that we're appraising and also the diversity of these properties. We have new construction. We have homes that contain many square feet in it. We also have homes that have depreciation. We also are appraising commercial property. Some of the frequent asked questions that we often hear is, will taxes increase because of a reappraisal? And that's difficult to say for two reasons. It depends on what the actual market value is of your property and of your neighborhood. The second also depends on the county, on what the tax rate will be established for that year. And this is based on the needs of the county. The tax office does not establish the tax rate. That is up to our Board of Commissioners to determine the needs of the county and determine that tax rate. When would the property owners know their new market value? We'll be mailing reappraisals, this is roughly February of 2020, to all property owners, letting them know what their new values are. If the new property... if the property owner disagrees with our... with the new property value, the tax office will be holding informal appeals starting in February and will roughly go to April to the Board of Equalization and Review, first begins to meet. Most of the appeals during this point will be resolved. This is when the tax office and the citizens get to share information. Maybe this will require a site visit to the property, and we will determine what is an accurate market value of the property. If we cannot agree, then the citizen also has a chance to appeal to the Board of Equalization and Review. If they do not like that appeal, they can always go to the Property Tax Commission and ultimately to the Court of Appeals. And once we establish what market value is, tax bills will become due. The first bills that will reflect the change in values would be mailed out in July of 2020. They will be due September 1st of 2020. And like I said, that's a brief overview. If there's any questions, I'll be more than happy to take any questions.
Scott has a question to kind of clarify something we were...
Sam, can you clarify the difference between a property being appraised in a revaluation process based upon a neighborhood value set on... just so the public understands appraisal versus revale?
Correct. What we do is we do what we call sales ratio studies. And what we do there is we look at properties that are selling in the open market, and we determine whether they are qualified sales or if they're not qualified sales. The definition between a willing buyer and a willing seller, neither one under the pressure to sell the property, will determine what the market value is. And what we do is we do that in the mass. We do statistical analysis of that neighborhood and of that neighborhood, and we determine of all the homes in the neighborhood or any properties located within the neighborhood what the value of that property is. A fee appraiser, on the other hand, could go out and look at the subject property and take roughly three to four comparables and come up with the same... should come up with the same appraised value. North Carolina, we appraise property at 100% of market value, and that's the job also of the fee appraiser. We should derive fairly closely at the same value. Of course, a reappraisal and appraisal are both opinions of what a market value, of what a property's true value is. And so if you get probably five or six different appraisers, you probably can get five or six roughly different values, but they're all going to be very similar. And also, too, it depends on when the fee appraiser does his or her appraisal. Our appraisal is done basically as of a given date, which would be January 1st of 2020. It will also be based on statistical analysis of the market, which basically would be taking themselves from 2017, 2018, 2019, and just a few months of 2020. And so during that time, the market's changing. So what we do is we basically set values every four years and kind of keep... where we know kind of what the tax base... the tax base will be over a period of time, and it kind of keeps it steady so we can actually plan our budgets and know exactly what our tax base is. And that market for the fee appraiser can go up and can go down depending on exactly what day they do their appraisal. Does that answer your questions, Scott, or...
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Okay. Yes.
Sam, thanks for coming today. Obviously, our county is growing and urbanizing, and I think a lot of focus is sometimes on ad valorem tax rate. But if we look at other urbanizing centers, especially city centers, I wanted to maybe just open the discussion today, certainly not to come to any, you know, decisions on this, but I just wondered, what consideration has your tax office in the reevaluation process looked at some of the maybe negative effects of the silent room, so to speak? You have communities where they're traditionally, at least over the last 30, 40 years, have been underutilized in the city centers, and you've got therein longtime residents who have lived in their homes, and the communities are changing around them. And with those market pressures and with the increase of the market rate, if we're taking a straight binary approach, you know, this is the 100% market value of this home yet it's been in the neighborhood, that's been depressed for, you know, 30, 40 years. Are we taking any consideration about, you know, are there ways that we can... let's just hypothetically say you look at a neighborhood, maybe you haven't crunched the numbers yet, but you look at a neighborhood and you're seeing a 200% increase of the market value, which, you know, if you look at a place like Durham, you look at some areas in metro Charlotte, this is not an uncommon, you know, occurrence. And you've got, you know, public school teachers and longtime residents being priced out by the tax base. A lot of times, it's a problem down by the coast, but we're seeing it more and more happen in our, you know, growing urban centers. So what... obviously, we make a decision about what our... So what, obviously, we make a decision about what our ad valorem tax rate's going to be, but there's going to be a lag in, you know, what the revaluation is and what our ad valorem taxes. What can we do as a county to try to soften those market pressures for these long-term residents, so that we are, you know, we're mindful of it when we're going through this process, and, you know, perhaps doing a little bit better than some of our neighboring communities have done it?
Appreciate the question. It's a good question, fair question. One of the things that we look at is to expand the market as broad as we can, into 965 neighborhoods, as far as throughout all of Pitt County. There's actually where market factors play into where we draw lines for what a market is and what a market's not. And of course, that market is constantly transitioning. And so sometimes, we do see that the market is driving up property values. And of course, it's our duties to actually reflect what the true market value is. One of the things that we try to do in any neighborhood that we go into is try to make sure that property owners know about all the exclusions that are available to them. There's basically, there's the elderly exclusion, which property owners who are above the age of 65, who have limited income, can have $25,000 or 50% of the value of their home, basically excluded from property taxes. So as we go into these transitioned neighborhoods, we try to make sure that people are aware of the exclusions that are out there. There's also a veteran's exclusion for anybody who's 100% service-related disabled. There's also an exclusion for anybody who is 100% disabled, as long as their income is below a certain dollar amount. So that's what we try to do as far as the tax office, is make sure people are aware of their exclusions. Also too, we try to make sure that we're fairly assessing properties. And the best way for us to do that is to make sure that we have our neighborhoods defined. We do not want to jump one or two blocks over and say, okay, this property is now going to be valued at the same amount as this property two to three blocks over is. That market might not actually cross over them blocks until a few years later.
So you would say that education, for folks that can take advantage of some of the exclusions that your office has put forth, is going to be critical, especially in these transitioned neighborhoods?
That's correct. Thank you.
Yeah, I wonder, following up on that, if there's a way to tell a difference in how the land is going up as opposed to the building on the land, which might be a big concern in some of these areas, that the land is becoming more valuable than the structure?
Correct. And that's what we see a lot in this transition, and especially with farmland inside the county. Whenever developers come, they pay for market, maybe full, above full market value, for the land itself. And this can just be raw land. And what they want to do is come and develop that land. And so what we do is, we appraise the land, we'll have a land schedule. We also have an improvement schedule as far as buildings. We actually do carry two different schedules.
So it'll be broke out, farmland versus non-farmland, so the board will be able to see the difference between those two?
Correct. And to speak a little bit, Mr. Elliott, about the land, the farmland will be valued at its current use, which is going to be substantially below the market value, and that's where we come up with what gets deferred as far as present use value program.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Is Ms. Yu Ha, so Ms. Newkirk here?
Hi, yeah.
Oh, yeah, there you are. Okay. I should have remembered that. Should we move on? Ms. Yu Ha says not here.
I'm going to employ your voice first, then come back and...
Would it be okay with you if we do the employee awards first, or do you need to get somewhere and we can do you? Okay, thank you very much. Then we will move forward with the employee service awards.
Well, once again, it is the board's pleasure to conduct an employee service awards presentation this morning, and as we do quarterly with the workforce, we'd like to recognize the tenure of Pitt County employees based upon categories of five, 10, 15, 20, 25, and 30 years of service. In some cases, we actually recognize 35 and 40, but today, we're going to top out at 30. So we're going to call the names in five-year increments, so we can hold the applause until the end. And as I call your name, it'll come up and we'll give you your recognition.
I'll say one thing. I don't have a pocket, and my light is green, but anyway, I want all the employees to know that this may just seem to be a routine thing that we do, but this is really very important to us. And I don't know how many other counties do this, but it really is meant as an appreciation for you and the job that you do every day. And I know coming to work, I was in education, and there were lots of days you weren't feeling real appreciated as you were commuting at 6:30 or 7 o'clock or whatever to get to work. But we just want you to know that you are appreciated, and that's really why we do this. Thank you for being here.
All right, so our first five-year category, we will call Sonya Carmona with Public Health. Teresa Sentanatis, Sheriff's Office. Terry Kroom, okay, I'm sorry. Candace Dearman, Public Health. Candace Franklin, Social Services. Jennifer Green, Public Health. And our last five-year is Colleen Ross, Sheriff's Office. Our first tenure recognition is April Belsky, Emergency Management. Stephen Branch, Emergency Management. Tasha Kika, Tisha Brown, Detention Center. Tasha Kisha.
Should have adjusted to the sound.
Natalie Harris, Social Services. And our last tenure, Tamika Steed, Detention Center. All right. In the 15-year category, Christina Carter, Social Services. Ronald Fair, Sheriff's Office. And our last one is Rudy Newsom, Sheriff's Office. All right, we have four 20-year recognitions this morning, and with the 20-year recognition comes a silver box.
With a blue ribbon.
The silver, yeah. The silver box represents the two-thirds mark towards a 30-year career in county government. And the employee gets to pick out a watch, and we always kid that they have 10 more years to watch their watches until they hit the magical 30-year mark if they so choose to retire at 30 years. So our first 20-year recognition is to Dolly Bryant Dawson with Juvenile Services.
And we're not against keeping you after 30 years, so this is just to impish you a little bit. Thank you so much.
We've actually had a couple 40-years, and people have said, what do I get at 40 years? I said, yeah, you get to give the watch back. And our last 20-year is to David Whitley, Sheriff's Office. In the 25-year category, two employees, Cynthia Hicks, Detention Center. Congratulations. A 130-year recognition this morning, and that is to Michelle Newkirk, who will also be recognized in another moment as well. Chairman Ward, would you like me to proceed with reading the resolution?
Yes, please. You read it.
Okay. Beautifully framed resolution to honor a 30-year employee, entitled Resolution Honoring Michelle Newkirk for her years of service with Pitt County Government. Whereas, Michelle Newkirk was hired January 3rd, 1989, in the position of Nutritionist I at the Pitt County Public Health Department. And whereas, Ms. Newkirk was promoted to Nutritionist II, October 8th, 2017. And whereas, Ms. Newkirk served the citizens of Pitt County for 30 years and nine months. And whereas, during her career with Pitt County Health Department, Michelle Newkirk served Pitt County Women Infant and Children's Program to ensure that families receive quality nutrition education and other early intervention strategies that the Health Department and community offer. And whereas, Michelle Newkirk has excellent rapport with the clients who were her many years of service, some would ask for her by name, some of the clients she saw as infants now come in to see her as adults after so many years of dedicated service. She is highly regarded because of her dedication, caring nature, and pride in serving families. And whereas, Michelle Newkirk has served as the department's liaison at Biden Medical Center to enroll new mothers and babies into the Women Infant and Children's Program. This has encouraged early interventions after the birth of a new baby, and has contributed to the improving breastfeeding rates with the Women Infant and Children Moms Program. And whereas, Ms. Newkirk has gone through many changes with the Women Infant and Children's Program, including the biggest change in the history of the Women Infant and Children's Program food package in 2009. And whereas, Michelle Newkirk completed various training over the years as the department advanced technologically, including the Women Infant and Children Crossroads Data System, Epic Electronic Medical Record System, and EWIC Electronic Benefit Transfer System. And whereas, Michelle Newkirk proposed several ideas to improve services, including a project to increase the number of prenatal clients being referred for Women Infant and Children's Services. In addition, she proposed a new system to help alert staff when clients were ready to be seen during the implementation of the Women Infant and Children's Crossroads Data System. Now therefore, it is resolved that the Pitt County Board of Commissioners does hereby express its gratitude and thanks to Michelle Newkirk for her career of dedicated and exemplary service to the people of Pitt County, and honor her with this resolution of appreciation given under our hands and sealed the Pitt County this 8th day of April 2019. Adopted this 8th day of 2019, of April, signed by Beth B. Ward, Chairman, and attested by the Clerk Kimberly W. Hines. Chairman Ward?
Thank you so much for your service and you've been...
I just want to say thank you. Gosh, it's real. I just want to thank Pitt County for everything. I recall when I was hired, I was, I am a graduate of A&amp;T State University, Aggie Pride. I was six months out of school, and I came home, and my mom here, she is my backbone. Anybody that knows me at the Health Department, you know, I call her, this is my sweet thing. She's my mommy. And my parents have always been there for me. My dad, he transitioned with the Lord a year ago, or he would have been here with me. They really deserve this, not me. Because without them, there wouldn't be no me. But I can recall when I interviewed for the job, my oldest sister, she lives in New Bern, and she came to Greenville, and she said, Michelle, I stopped getting a newspaper, and they had a job for a nutrition. I said, they're not going to hire me. She said, how do you know? I said, because they're not. And my mom said, okay, Michelle, that's not how we raised you. I said, okay, mommy. So at that time, you know, you had to go through the unemployment office to do an interview, and they interviewed me twice at the Health Department. I said, gosh, mom, why didn't you interview me two times? Momma said, Michelle, I don't know, but the second time, it just seemed like... But the second time, it just seemed like, I think I held this. And they called me three days later, and I said, "Mama, they offered me the job." And Mama said, "Well, what did you tell her?" I said, "I don't know." Mama said, "Well, you need to call her back and say, you know..." That was 30 years ago, you know, and, you know, I've never been ashamed of my age. I was 23-years-old when I started with Pitt County, and next month I'll be 54. So, you know, I've been at one job for 30 years. I did it, you know? And I'm proud. I mean, I guess might be said, you know, it's bittersweet, but I'm happy. I'm happy. Thank you.
I know you'll be calling on her to hell in situations when we need you, and you'll be there, right?
I will. Okay. Thank you.
Is Wanda Ehoss here yet?
We'll pick her up when she comes in.
Okay.
We have refreshments in the back to honor our recipients, our employees, and our recipient retirement. And everybody else is welcome. We have plenty for everybody, and if you go through that door...
Madam Chair, before we do that, Kim, we want to make a motion to approve both resolutions.
Oh, yes. Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye, or click on my button. Thank you, Commissioner McGlaughlin. Okay, so we're ready, and you can come, and if you would like for us to bring you something, we can do that. Okay? All right, let's go.
Welcome back. Thank you for giving us that opportunity to recognize our employees. And if Ms. Yuhas comes in, we will give her her recognition, her resolution. We have public addresses to the board next. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Madam Chairman, we have one person signed up, Robert O'Neil. The Attorney will read our public address statement.
Yes, Madam Chair, Pitt County welcomes comments on all matters of public concern. I'll keep your time at three minutes per speaker, at which time it will beep. And Pitt County requires that you may keep all comments constructive and will not tolerate any personal attacks.
Let me thank you again for me being able to come out here and speak to y'all. Again, I am up here voicing my opposition against the landfill.
If you will identify yourself again, just...
Robert O'Neil, Allen Road, Greenville, North Carolina.
Thank you.
You're welcome. In one of the Homeowners Association meetings that I was invited to address, and when I showed them the map, of course, you know, people see things that you don't always see. They wanted to know why you did not go to the homes closest to the landfill that you went down the road. On this map that y'all, that Mr. Elliott emailed me, the residents that are closest to the operation of this machinery was not on the map as being the first place that y'all stopped at. Y'all stopped farther down the road to do the sound evaluation. The second thing that was brought up in one, in the same Homeowners Association meeting is why did the county do their own evaluation? That who knows that Transload could have had a train halfway full of materials during this test? And that the readings could be off because the county did it, and the county is getting money, just like I always said. The county is getting money, getting paid, and don't want them to go nowheres, and that's the way we feel. On this map, if you look on Stanton's Borough Highway, the closest homes to the operation of this machinery, they have said that they have voiced their opinion to the county that it shakes their house every time it's operated. Don't know if that's true or not, but that's what they told me. And that's the houses on Stanton's Borough Road, just down from the vacant company that used to be there, I think it was the Sheet Rock Place. Like I said last time that I was up here, according to the city of Greenville, if you have an industrial area and you have a residential area next to the industrial area, the industrial area's sound limits is not overriding to the residential area. It is only for that residential, I mean, for the industrial area. So therefore, according to this map and some of the reading, y'all are in violation of city ordinance. Seventy-five decimals cannot go in a residential area, even if it's beside industrial area. So that's kind of, you know, about all I got. I still want the county to do something about it. They do make industrial vibrators that are quiet. It's like I said the last time. I rode back there the week before the last county meeting, up to the gate. I've never been that back there when it operates, but the machinery that looks like it goes over the rail cars, it shakes and looks like something from the Wild Wild West. I mean, it looks like it's outdated. They do make industrial vibrators with low sound that will vibrate these cars that everybody else uses, even farmers use them to empty their grain bins. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our next item, our items for report, Mr. Demery?
Good morning. Pitt County operates 14 convenience sites throughout the county for solvation, recycling, collection. We currently contract with two different companies, Management Support and Development and Trust Denim Group, to staff these sites. The existing contracts were first executed back in June 30th, 2008, and have been renewed several times. And our sched, and the contracts are scheduled to expire this June of 2019. Pitt County Solvation Recycling has been contacted by a number of other companies, asking if and when we were going to put the staffing out to bid. And so, we, the staff and I, engineering staff and county manager, we've talked about it, and we think it's a good time for us to go and send out requests for proposals to staff the sites. I'm just here to report to you, once we receive those proposals, I'll be back for, before you to, with a recommendation. And just want to let you know that this is, this would be taking place. And glad to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions? Okay. Thank you very much, Sean. The manager's report, thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Just a few things to report. A through E is listed on the agenda. A is the next meeting dates, April 22nd at 6:00 PM, and then the first meeting in the month of May, on May 6th at 9:00 AM. B is just a reminder about the annual breakfast at the Shepherd Memorial Library for elected officials on April 29th at 8:00 AM. Item C, if you will note, there's a change in date on the NCACC, which is the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners County Assembly Day in Raleigh. It has been rescheduled from May 1st to May 8th due to another local rally that's going to be occurring on that day. The association chose to push this back one week to May the 8th. Item D, the Supreme Court visit. I believe the clerk has reached out to the board regarding the different logistics of pictures and the session attendance and so forth on that item. Then item E is just to make you aware that for the position of Industrial Development Commission Director for the Pitt County Development Commission, we are actively recruiting, advertising for that position, and that is going forth. And Madam Chairman, that's all I have.
Okay. We'll entertain a motion for items for consent approval. So moved.
Second.
James Roach, you're up next. Welcome back.
Good morning, again. It's hard to believe we're less than a year away from Census Day 2020. April 1st, 2020 is our official date where we'll all be counted. As you know, by the U.S. Constitution, we're, the United States undertakes this every 10 years through the decennial census, and we want to make sure we get everyone counted here in Pitt County. It is vital to us and what types of grants and other things that we may receive. We were very successful. Vice Chairman McLawhorn was involved with our Complete Count Committee back in 2010. We're going to take advantage of saying that we helped increase the response rate by about 10% here in Pitt County. Nobody can refute that, right, Mr. McLawhorn? So we, just a few highlights from what we saw last time. We increased the response rate from what it was at 65% back in the 2000 census, up to 74% at, in 2010. So had a lot of promotional activities. This was one down at Evan Street, where we brought in the census van, had a lot of good information to share with the local folks, to make folks easy, feel more easy about signing up for the census. And so this time, it's going to be handled right, much differently. Not so much with the census, with the Complete Count Committee, but most of the census and your forms will be done online. And so there's a whole promotional activity that will be part of that, and that's why it's even more vital that we get this out to the public this time. So last time, we did have a broad-ranging committee, and we feel like, Madam Chair, that this is something we need again this year. And kind of to kick all this off, we have a partnership specialist with the Census Bureau here this morning. She travels around, kind of gets some of these activities kicked off, and we have Bernadette Bennett with us, who's going to provide a brief presentation about what it all means moving forward in 2020, and what it can mean for Pitt County in particular. So with that, Ms. Bennett? Richard?
Good morning. My name is Bernadette Riches. I'm the partnership specialist appointed to the Way County, along with several other counties, to include Pitt. Basically, I'm from the Atlanta Regional Office, and we have the Regional Office have oversight of North Carolina, South Carolina, Alabama, Mississippi, Florida, and Georgia. And I'm here today to basically share with you the importance of engaging and educating residents as it pertains to the 2020 census. And as I said before, I'm from the Regional Office. The goal of the census is to count everyone once, only once, at the right place. That said, some individuals have concern as to the count for, take for instance, universities. If there are students in dormitories at the time of the count, that's where they're counted. They're not counted in their parents' place of residence. So given that you do have a university in your area, that's actually an asset. Basically, this is just, this slide shows states that have gained and/or lost seats. The intent or of North Carolina, we're somewhat geared to gaining a seat, and again, it's based on the census, the data that is collected. Florida, they gained two seats the last decennial. Georgia gained one, South Carolina gained none, North Carolina remained the same. The census is very powerful in terms of political representation and funds. And as I mentioned before, gaining a seat in Congress, that is the political power that the census actually has. And funds, it determines actually funding, especially federally funding for roads, infrastructure, social services program. Again, that is all related to the census. George Washington University conducted a study in which it shows that in North Carolina, the funds were determined based on $1,632 per capita, per person. That is how it was distributed for these social services program, along with infrastructure programs for roads. It is pertinent to note that in support of, we're actually asking resources to be identified in support of the Complete Count Committee. That Complete Count Committee should be actually represented based on the diversity of your, of the county. If you're familiar with the Emergency Solution Grant, which is a HUD grant, if there agencies, representative from agencies are required, who are beneficiaries or grantees of the Emergency Solution Grant, they have to form what's called a continuum of care in homelessness. I say that to say, if you have within your region, within your area, a continuum of care, it is pertinent to ensure that someone from that committee is actually represented under the Complete Count Committee, because they service the homeless, they know where they are and who they are. The response rate for North Carolina in the last decennial was 76. In 2000, it was 69. For the Pitt County, it was 65 in 2000, and it increases 74%. The goal is to actually have... The goal is to actually have 82% or greater this time around. Basically, this is just somewhat of a cycle in terms as to the census, what's being done and how it's done, and where it begins. It is, the first phase is establish where to count. We establish where to count. We identify addresses, but that is a continuous process for the mere fact that you continue to have new construction. We're right at motivating people to respond, and basically, me being here is a part of it. Then we have actually where the postcards are going to be mailed out to residents, to households, and I'll discuss that later. Individuals are also concerned about the privacy. We are sworn for life, meaning census employees for life, whether we're with, no longer with the census or not, to, in terms of confidentiality and privacy. In terms of data of the census, that is released every 72 years, which is actually almost, for some people, a lifetime. We never ask for social security. We never ask for passwords. We never ask for monetary donation, and we're not affiliated with any political party. The information in which we collect has to do with age, sex, marital status, housing, health, and insurance. We also collect information as it pertains to businesses and industry data, import, exports, employment, and government data. The census data are used in many ways. It forecasts the future of transportation needs, and as I mentioned before, even in terms of grant, grant funding. Take for instance, the Community Development Black Grant, also a part of HUD program. There's some states or some areas or regions that actually receive entitlement grants as it pertains to CDBG, home, or ESG, meaning they don't have to go through the competitive process. Whereas there are other areas, they have to go through the competitive process. Again, that is all based and driven by census data. And even in terms of applying for grants, what, as federal grants, one always have to refer back to information pertaining from census data to actually validate the need for funding. This year, this decennial, it's going to be totally different. Information is going to be gathered by the internet. Census, a post, postcard from the census will be mailed out to each household with a barcode. That barcode is unique to that household. They would use that information to go online and actually fill out the census information. If for some reason that some individuals are not comfortable with that mode of filling out the information, they could actually request a hard paper. As it pertains to non-compliance with either process, we will have boots on the ground, meaning individuals, we have enumerators knocking on door, they will actually go to an address three times until they get the response, but only three times. And we know for some individuals, they have concern as it pertains to seniors. Seniors may not be comfortable with this mode of, this new mode of filling in their, or in putting their data. So at that point, I'm sure, you know, we'll, basically, most of the seniors will be boots on the ground in terms of getting their information. This is just basically telling you how likely it would be to fill out the census form. And again, we have several modes. On the phone, they could use, most people have smartphones, they could use the phone to actually fill out the information, as well as, again, going back to the internet. And it'd be nice if maybe the library could provide access to those individuals to fill out the information for, on the internet. The first set of postcards will be mailed out in March. And basically, this is telling you the self-response timeline. The target population, five years and under. For some reason, that population was undercounted last decennial, along with veterans, people with disability, homelessness, people living in rural area, and so on. It is to the benefit of the Complete Count Committee to have individuals who service these, this target population, to be a part of your Complete Count Committee. Geographic partnership programs, accurate census data comes from accurate geography, geographic data. We have what's geographic section within the census that has ongoing contact with GRS personnel in the various states and cities. And information is constantly, as I said, changing as it pertains to that, as a result of people moving, relocating, and also new construction. And new construction, we have different four means of it. Luca, and which is a partner review period from March to July 2018, feedback to participants in August 2019. New construction, boundary and annexation survey, survey, participants, statistical area program. These are a variety of areas and means of actually having to upgrade the system as to, it pertains to new construction and residents relocating. This is basically, again, Title 13, non-Titel 13 information, and that's the decennial program designed to capture new addresses for housing units, as I said before. The North Carolina 2020 Complete Count, the governor has committed to attaining 82% or better, and in doing so, he has formed what's called a Complete Commission, and it's headed by Michelle Sanders, and that's the individual with the Ross vest in the middle. And it has a wide array of individuals that are from certain areas, geographic, certain areas, elected officials, and ethnic, and racial spectrums. An overview of the Complete Count is the ultimate goal, is ultimately the success of the 2020 census. And the ultimate goal is really to educate and engage residents as to the need to respond to the 2020 census, and how it actually could affect them, or may affect them, and could be beneficiary to them. Local governments, this is basically a list of representative, again, who should be on the Complete Count Committee. These are trusted voices, and what we found is that the faith-based organizations are the trusted voices in the community, and so therefore, we're encouraging representatives on the Complete Count Committee to be of that, from the faith-based organization, because they're the trusted voices. And we basically went over this here already, and we, I spoke about the five years and under, and under individuals that were undercounted, along with the hidden and overcrowded housing, and it pass, it's possible that, take for instance, if someone have what's called, or defined by HUD as a couch surfer, that individuals, those individuals are not counted in, as a part of that household, and they should be counted. And basically, we're just encouraging counties to get engaged right now, and to prepare for the 2020 census. What we do have is what we call Rome, is the Response Area Mapper. And what that allows you to do is to actually, at the time during the, when we're having the census, you could actually use this site to target into areas that you could, that maybe, may have a low response rate. So it allows you to target those areas and actually go into those areas and assist in terms as to collection of the data. And this is what Rome does. So it tells you where the high response rates are, where the low response rates are, and allows the Complete Count Commission, the Complete Count Committee to actually go into that area and assist with the process. HUD Census Bureau will help, the Census Bureau will support in terms of providing resources, but not financial resources. We provide manpower, material, we'll assist with, if there are events that we're invited to, we'll assist with, in terms of being there, anything but financial resources.
That's what we need most.
We, huh?
I said, that's what we need most.
Oh, okay. Well, what we found, Gaston County, they last decennial, they actually, the county of Gaston, actually set aside funds and had billboards and everything that you could think of, and they, response rate drastically increased. That's something for you to think about. And there's, there, there are things that counties can do that is not actually a hardship financially. Simple things as having to put the census, advertise the census and bills, tax bills, water bills, that can be done. What is interesting, I met with one county manager, and it was, he meant, he said something that stuck with me, and he said, the first day of school, you have parents go into their kids' backpack. If you could just placed something in there as it pertains to the census, that first day of school is a great marketing tool, along with Facebook. If you have Facebook page, fine, you could actually place the information on your Facebook page. In addition to that, the same individuals, what they, he said, is that they will just actually have a Facebook page just solely dedicated to the census. So as I said, you know, resources that are not a financial burden to counties could actually assist with the process. We're currently recruiting nationwide, and I've shared this information with Mr. Rhodes to post on billboards, or, well, not bulletin boards, or on websites. We're recruiting for a array of positions, census administrative manager, area census office manager, census field manager, IT recruiting manager, and what the focus is right now is recruiting manager to enable us to recruit the other employees that are necessary. We have in other positions enumerators, which will be those individuals that are boots on the ground, and as an numerator, you could actually do your own schedule. Your schedule is flexible. And basically, that's it.
Any questions or comments?
Well, I have comment. I'm, I'm glad to hear that you are going to have some boots on the ground.
Mm-hmm.
Because I would think that if everything is going to be online, that you definitely going to miss some people, and you recognize some that were missed last time. I'm especially concerned with the homelessness, you know, being missed, and how you're going to reach them, because I, I experienced some homelessness in my neighborhood, and this, this man, he sits on a, if it's a vacant lot, or on somebody's porch, or, you know, so that's where he stays.
And as I said before, in the agencies or organizations, to include nonprofit organizations that service that population, they know who they are and where they are. That's why it's pertinent to ensure that they are seated at the table in the Complete Count Committee.
Yes, we have another question.
Can you tell us, will, will we have a local office like we've had in the past, or will there be a regional office, and the difference between the two, and where it would be located?
The regional, we currently have a regional office in, I'm sorry, not a regional, the regional office is Atlanta, and the regional office have oversight of the various states I've mentioned, to include North Carolina, which is North Carolina, South Carolina, Mississippi, Alabama. The area office is located in Raleigh, the nearest area office, and they have placed area offices in, I guess, large urban cities, metropolitan cities. Charlotte has one, Raleigh has one, and there's two others that right now, I actually don't know where they are, but this, I, the closest area office to this location is Raleigh.
And we have had regional offices here, I think, in the past.
Oh, really?
In 2010, we did.
Yeah, they've actually cut back, because I don't know if you are aware that there were actually an office in Charlotte. That was a permanent office, and they actually closed that office. So that, that office no longer exists.
So you don't know as to whether or not there's an office east of 95?
No, I don't, but I'm assuming, and I could get back with you on that, but I'm assuming that, given the fact that there's only four offices, I actually can't tell you if the nearest office will be Raleigh, but right now, Raleigh is the nearest office that's opened.
We'd appreciate you getting back to us on that.
I sure will.
And because that's, that will be very different.
Yeah, I'll contact Mr. Rhodes.
From what we've experienced in the past, just let James know. Thank you very much.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you, James.
And we did need a motion on that too, Madam Chair. Again, what we'd like to do is what we did last time, is draft a letter for you to send out to various organizations and try to recruit people in for this Complete Count Committee. So if we could get that started, we'd appreciate it.
So moved, Mr. Rhodes. Okay, we've had a motion and a second, if we would vote on it. It'll be here before we know it. Okay. Next, we have our fire district adjustment consideration.
So good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Jim MacArthur serving as interim director of emergency management, presenting up here today on behalf of emergency management, our local fire districts. We do have Chief of Aiden Fire Department, Sam Jones, with us today. A couple of the other chiefs that were going to be discussed, and were not able to be with us this morning, but we have been working closely with them. So as you might know by now, one of the main jobs of emergency management is relationship and collaboration building amongst our partners and end-users. That's something that we're really good at here locally. So we've worked directly with the local fire chiefs, following this request from the homeowners of the Macon-Crossing subdivision, that area in Southern Pitt County, to review insurance and fire service districts in that area. Recent collaborations have included the manager even coming with us to a fire association meeting, or chief's association meeting, to present to them about that collaboration and about the proposed changes. Deputy Fire Marshal Jay Morris is here with us today. He put together this short PowerPoint. He's been instrumental on this project as well, so thanks to him. So I've got a short presentation, just real quickly. Fire service district is what we're talking about today. So if you see in the presentation here, a fire service district is encompassing of three things. The response district, which is kind of your 911 call, when the call goes out, the fire department, who shows up, that's a response district. The tax district, obviously, that's kind of speaks for itself as well. Whoever lives within that geographic area is who pays taxes to each of that respective fire department. And an insurance district is whose district you wind up reporting to your insurance And an insurance district is whose district you wind up reporting to your insurance company as to what that rating is. So we serve under fire service districts here in Pitt County, which is encompassing of all three of those things. So it standardizes the methodology by which we look at these things, okay? So it's outside of a municipality. The Commissioners level has approved these boundaries, and it's equitable fire tax. So just a quick visualization of that, this map here on your, this is just a visualization for you that, so that you can see that all three of the districts lie inside of that boundary, okay? So really, what we have is standardization. It just ensures that the tax is levied equitably across all properties within that district. All right. So the service districts, specifically what we're here to talk about today is the stuff that's highlighted in the green lines, green and white shaded lines. That's kind of right in the middle of the Aiden, Eastern Pines, Blackjack service areas. It does butt up to Gardner'sville. So to change that district line, this general statute, 153A, 304.3, governs this. And so as Commissioners, we in emergency services, we must follow this general statute to make changes to these service districts. So, quick rundown of what the general statute is. There's two ways that changes can be made to a service district. One is a 100% signed petition from all affected landowners must take place, okay? Or the Board of Commissioners can request a report from emergency services staff that contains all of the items there, a map of the proposed changes, a statement of the proposed change, a plan for new levels of service, and what the effect on the change in taxable property is within that. So we would, what we would then do, when you approve that report, is that we bring it back to you, ask for a public hearing, you give us a resolution to make that change, and then we do that. So what we're here for today specifically is a motion to be able to generate this report. So all of the collaboration following with the chiefs has effectively gotten to a position where they are agreeable on the district changes and how it will affect their respective tax bases, the response bases, and the insurance areas. And so we want permission to move forward with that report from you today, to bring it back at some point in the near future for a public hearing and a resolution to push forth to the Department of Insurance. Just for your, just for your general knowledge, the level of service in this area, and generally what we would think about across the county, would remain exactly the same. The, it's a high quality of service, all the departments servicing that area are well-equipped, good staff, they're good people, they do a good job. Just for example, motor vehicle wrecks, brush fires, you know, service calls, your smoke alarms and things, they would get the same type of fire engine, okay? The same type of firefighters, they just may wear a different name on their shirt. For a house fire, specifically if someone's house is on fire, you know, the severe emergencies that we think of, we're already sending multiple agencies. So for this area, we're already sending three fire departments. It would just be that the order in which their alarm is sounded would be different in this case, okay? So the same departments would be responding, same personnel, and the same numbers. So there's no cumulative effect on the level of service and who responds to the area. It would just be a better insurance rating for those homeowners that currently are outside of that line. What was requested was the Macon's Crossing area. County staff has reviewed the area, and so we would like to move forward with a report to bring back to you as how it affects this area and these streets.
And Jim, it's actually Macon's Crossing plus a larger area.
Correct. The, kind of what you see on this, on this whole page, Macon's Crossing is highlighted, but there is a larger area by which the chiefs, once we started looking at the maps, we noticed there was opportunity for improvement to a number of households right in this general area. And so that was reviewed with the chiefs and us, we'd like to bring that report to you. And I truly can't tell you how strong it is that I believe this, in our department and our agencies, that we are one family with one focus and one mission, and that's to serve the citizens and to help you serve the citizens. And so we'll do that. Are there any questions?
Before we call for motion or questions, a while back, a good while back, I served in a committee that lasted about a year and a half. And I just want the volunteer firemen and fire departments to know what they mean to this county and to other counties, I'm sure, throughout the state. And what they do that we do not have to do as a county is unbelievable. We support them financially, but nothing close to what they need and what they go out and hold fundraisers and do. So we really do appreciate them. And anything that they are in agreement to, I feel like we will always be. So thank you for the presentation.
Absolutely.
Any comments or questions, motion? And this is just to give you permission to move forward with the plan.
That's correct. And we'll, we'll, we'll report back and ask for a public hearing. We'll try to give a couple of weeks' notice, as the statute says, and bring that back.
We have a motion, a second?
Sure.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor for moving forward, if you'll vote, please. Thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you for being here. Okay, next, we have our appointment to the Fire District Commission.
Yes, on the Fire District Commission appointments, you have a recommendation for Milton Spain, seat 18, well, actually, he is, State and House Fire Department passed away, Ralph Forbes is needed replacement, so they're recommending John Maynard for seat 35 to represent Red Oak, well, actually, I'm getting this backwards. Recommendation to appoint Ralph Forbes to the Fire District Commission for State and House Fire Department, Danny Coward to the Fire District Commission representing Red Oak as well.
Motion.
So move.
Okay. Motion and a second, if you'll vote, please.
Just a minute, I'm sorry.
Wait just a second, until we get it cleared.
There you go.
There we go. Okay, and you'll vote. Okay, and our next appointment is for the Farmers Market Advisory Committee.
Yes, she had a recommendation from Lee Guth, the Coffee Extension Director, for three individuals, Joanie McLawhorn, Jean Sponge, and Andy Janson to be appointed.
Is there a motion?
Remove.
We have a motion and a second, okay? All right, and we have an appointment to the Pitt County Home and Community Care Block Grant.
Yes, a recommendation from the Mid East Commission from Annette U. Banks for the appointment of Marty Dill Rittenhour.
And if you'll note that his application has been in for only 10 days, but we have done that in, in the past.
So it'd be an exception to the policy?
It'll be an exception to the policy, just so you know. Motion to approve? All in, let's vote, please. Okay, yes. And Ms. U. Haas is here, so we'll make her presentation now before we go into closed session.
Madam Chairman, let me proceed reading.
Yes, please.
Resolution. This is a long one, I'll take a deep breath. Resolution honoring Wanda U. Haas for her years of service with Pitt County Government. Whereas Wanda U. Haas began her career with Pitt County, with the Pitt County Industrial Development Commission on October 19th, 1987, as the Assistant Director/Marketing and Research. And whereas Wanda U. Haas became interim Director, interim Executive Director of the Pitt County Industrial Development Commission on January 1st, 2006, and was then appointed Executive Director of the Industrial Development Commission on March 26, 2006. And whereas Wanda U. Haas has served the citizens of Pitt County for 32 years and 10 months.
I have a major sprig in it.
And whereas Wanda U. Haas's tenure, during her tenure, the following projects were initiatives were realized. Natural blends vegetable dehydration, semi-plastics, Iota USA, pearlium, signature seasoning, Sun Energy One, DR Burton, Carolina Polity, North Carolina Pharmaceutical Services Network, BioPharma Crescent, the vertically integrated network for entrepreneurial support, otherwise known as Vines, and the Pitt County Committee 100 land acquisition from Greenville Industries. Whereas Wanda U. Haas has been an ethical part of company expansions such as Patheon Thermo Fisher, Maine Pharma, Asmo, ASM Dynema, Attens, formerly known as Domtar, Ham Storage, TRC, Heistre Yale, Metalix, Coastal Beverage, Grady White Boats, Grover Gaming, Air Mania, Fuji Solicia, and the Hammock Source. There's probably others we didn't have on here. And whereas Wanda U. Haas has served as the Pitt County community through the various groups and boards and committees, including the Pitt County, the Martin Pitt Partnership for Children, the Pitt County Committee of 100, the Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina Advisory Council, the Dean's Advancement Council of East Carolina University College of Engineering Technology, Industrial Engineering and Technology Advisory Board, the Greenville Pitt County Chamber of Commerce, Pitt County Arts Council at Emerge, the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Committee of the Mid East Commission. And whereas in 2017, Wanda U. Haas was named Economic Developer of the Year by the North Carolina Economic Development Association. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the Pitt County Board of Commissioners does hereby express its gratitude and thanks to Wanda U. Haas for her career and dedicated exemplary service to the people of Pitt County, and honor her with this resolution of appreciation given under our hands in the seal of Pitt County this 8th day of April 2019. Adopted this 8th day, 8th day of April 2019, signed by our Chairman, Beth B. Ward, and attested by our Clerk, Kimberly W. Hines. Madam Chairman?
Yes. But I'm going to keep it short. And they're smirking because they don't think I can do that. The first time I appeared before the Board of Commissioners, when I became Executive Director, I said, "I don't think anybody can want this job more than I do." And then I said, "Because I don't think anybody can care more about Pitt County than I do." And I know that over the last 30-plus years, we haven't all always agreed, and we have managed to get through those disagreements. But I don't think any of you or the public have ever questioned my motives, even if you questioned my actions. And I appreciate our ability to work together and that bottom line, and I take this from the fire rescue and emergency management folks, one family, one focus. I think we've been able to be that. And just like all families, we haven't always been on the same page, but we've always cared about each other and cared about the Pitt County family. And I don't think you can expect more than that from our Commissioners and from the staff who are employed here. We all really do care and are committed.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad we got it.
Madam Attorney, if you'll take us into closed session, and do we have a, need a motion before that?
Right after I say it.
Thank you. If you'll say it.
It has been suggested that this board go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318.11A5 regarding attorney-client privilege, A3, I'm sorry, A5 acquisition of property, A3 attorney-client privilege, and A1 confidential information.
Okay, now we'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
We have a motion to go into closed session, second? Let's vote, please. Chris, you going with us?
Oh, sorry.
No. Okay. Let it go.
Welcome back after our closed session. We have two items of business. Yes, I'll recognize Ms. Perkins-Williams.
I make offer the motion that we purchased the Warren Farm property to the tune of $3.8 million.
Okay, is there a second? Did we see anything in the motion that this was for development? Should that be included?
For economic development purposes.
Would you mind adding that for economic purposes?
Oh, yes, for economic purposes.
Madam Chair, I'd move to approve the closed session minutes of Monday, March 25, 2019.
And that ends, and before we adjourn, we'll start with the commissioners' comments.
On June 15, the Bell Barb Community Day will be held at 2197 Old River Road. Fun, food, and game, and we're using it as the mixing of the cultures. So, we invite all of you to come out. In addition to that, a recruiter contacted me over the weekend regarding hiring some roofers. They need roofers for the next two to six years. So, if you'd like to get a job with roofers, I can give you the information.
We've had a number of times that an individual's come before us, and he talks about the noise. I would like to remind the board that there's a scientific thing called the TBA, which is loudness, and that's what they refer to, 75 decibels of loudness. But it doesn't necessarily take into account frequency. Has anybody ever lived next door to a young boy when he's got a basketball, and he's out there dribbling a basketball on a concrete pad, and his friends are there, and that boom, So, the thing is, loudness isn't the only measure. Frequency is another thing to take into account, and I think that we really ought to look at that from with the shaker, how much noise it actually makes and what frequency it actually